Good evening. We'll get these meetings started if you'd all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, with one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for This evening, the Board of Education is recognizing an outstanding group of Parkway employees and students. We are honoring seven National Board Certified Teachers and two National Board Certified School Nurses. In addition, we're honoring an Eagle Award Scholarship winner, as well as the winners of the Missouri Cheerleading Coaches Association State Cheer Champions. First, I would like to invite Amy Kirkin-Cotes to Talent Development Coordinator to the podium.
Good evening, Dr. Marty, President Todd, Vice President Sorentino, Ms. Stover, and members of the Board. As the Talent Development Coordinator, it is with great pleasure and pride that I come here tonight to celebrate seven more talented Parkway educators that have earned National Board Educator Status, bringing our district total up to 59 nationally-certified educators. As you know, the National Board Certification is an advanced teaching credential. It complements but does not replace a teacher's state license. National Board Certification is achieved upon successful completion of a voluntary assessment program designed to recognize effective and accomplished teachers who meet high standards based on what teachers should know and be able to do. Certification consists of four components: content knowledge, differentiation in instruction, teaching practice and learning environment, and effective and reflective practitioner. Throughout the process, educators are able to apply what they've learned to their practice and connect with other teachers pursuing certification. As a district, we support educators throughout their journey with a scholarship and partner each candidate with a current Parkway National School Board Certified Educator to serve as mentor. National Board spent 2014 through 2018 revising the process, and this group represents the second class to graduate with the new, even more rigorous requirements. We have over 25 other educators at different places in their journey, collecting data, videotaping lessons, measuring impact, and adjusting instruction to be able to join the ranks of these previous teachers that have successfully walked this path. To date, only around 1,000 Missouri educators have achieved National Board Certification. Tonight, we celebrate our newest members of this very elite group. Please join me in congratulating the following educators. Congratulations, Carly. Mrs. Julia Ohr.
Next, please welcome Roden Wallen, Director of Health.
Good evening, President Todd, Vice President Sorentino, members of the Board, Dr. Marty and Mrs. Stover. It's my sincere pleasure to present to you tonight our two latest nationally-certified school nurses, Karen Malik from Green Trails Elementary and Kimberly Morelli from West Middle School. Nurse Malik and Nurse Morelli are compassionate, caring, and skilled professionals who support student health and achievement every day. These dedicated school nurses join 20 other Parkway nurses who have also earned National School Nurse Certification. Parkway nurses make up 25 percent of the nationally-certified school nurses in Missouri, and we have more certified nurses than any other school district in the state. This is something to celebrate. School nursing is a nationally-recognized nursing specialty. I'm very proud of our nursing group in Parkway and the nurses who have chosen to invest the time and effort to demonstrate commitment to providing the best possible care for our students and school community. The NCSN credential is recognized as the only nationally-accredited credential that validates a school nurse's specialized knowledge and expertise in school nursing. It represents the school nurse's professional commitment to lifelong learning and quality care. Earlier this evening, you had the opportunity to hear from our wonderful nursing group about their, during the Communication Lab, about the myriad of ways that they support Parkway's mission, vision, learning principles, and commitments. They are truly a remarkable group and critical to the success of our district. On behalf of our nursing group, I thank you for your ongoing support for school health services, for our program, and our committed nurses. Welcome our two new certified nurses.
Before we move on to the other celebrations, as part of representing administration, both at the district level and school building, I just want to say we're so proud of these educators and these nurses for Parkway to have the number of now nationally-certified teachers and certainly our nurses. We're certainly a leader. And I just want the audience and our public to know, this is a lot of work. Besides, you know, they're not taking time off. They're doing this work at time, weekends, and summers, and working with others. So again, as administration, and want to note this with the Board of Education, we're very, very proud of this group, and we have, as Amy suggested, many other people in the pipeline working. So congratulations. It certainly makes Parkway a wonderful place, and our families need to know how hard our educators are working on behalf of children and their careers. Thank you very much.
Next, I'd like to invite Katie DeGrua, Parkway's Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you very much. It is my honor tonight to be able to award a scholarship to one of our seniors this year. Earlier this year, I won an Eagle Award from ASBO International, and one of the greatest benefits from that is I get to award a student $2,500 in scholarship money for them to fund their college endeavors. So I'd like for Chloe Groner to come forward with me. Chloe is a highly decorated senior from Central High School. She has several honor societies that she belongs to, so the National Honor Society, the National English Honor Society, Beta Chi Phi, which is the Science Honor Society, Rho Kappa, which is the Social Studies Honor Society, Tri-M, which is the Music Honor Society, and the International Thesbian Society. She's also received several honors and awards along the way. So at a leadership conference, she was selected to attend the Dr. Tim, let's see, Lautzenhauser Leadership Workshop in her senior year. For theater, she was a Player of the Year her junior year and elected by her peers. She was selected to perform Sonya, Vanya, Masha, and Spike at the Missouri State Thesbian Conference. Was that just past weekend?
Last year.
Last year? Awesome. And then choir, she has been in the All Suburban Choir, Southmore Junior in her senior year, All-State Choir, Gold Rating at the 2018 District Solo and Ensemble in her junior year, the Silver Rating at the 2018 State Solo and Ensemble her junior year, and Most Improved Musician in her sophomore year. All of this with, I have permission from Chloe to disclose this, all of this with a high GPA of 3.7 with a diagnosis of dyslexia. What an amazing achievement, showing persistence, grit, and perseverance. Chloe, I couldn't have picked a better person to award this scholarship to.
Next, I'd like to invite Mike Watt, Director of Athletics and Activities.
Thank you, Board members, Dr. Marty. It is my honor and privilege as the Director of Athletics and Activities for the Parkway Schools to be here tonight to recognize and honor some very special cheerleaders and coaches for their accomplishments. The Parkway South varsity cheerleaders recently competed in the Missouri Cheerleading Coaches Association Competition held at Lindenwood University. The squad won a state championship in the co-ed small division. They also won the regional competition at St. Francis Borja. We have a large squad, and not everybody could be here tonight, but I do want to read their names and honor and recognize them. So as your president, please come across. Samantha Chapman. Meredith Devenbach. Grace Donovan. Maddie Dugan. Clara Franz. Morgan Glenn. Ally Grabino. Megan Hogg. Molly Hogan. Morgan McCarthy. Jordan Medlock. Mara Morell. Abigail Miller. Sophia Porter. Marissa Reddington. Abigail Sawyer. Alyssa Schwager. Emma Schaefer. Hannah Stark. Ashley Story. Shannon Seidell. Kami Vitale. Jenna Watson. And Jordan Welker. Cheerleaders are coached by Taylor Forman and Coach Nancy Allen. Thank you, coaches, for your hard work and dedication. To the cheer squad, best of luck next weekend as they compete in Dallas, Texas, in the national competition.
Again, thank you to all of our students and families and Parkway staff for joining us this evening. Parents, you have some outstanding children and should be very, very proud. At this time, we'll take a brief break, and we'll resume the board meeting shortly.
Okay. We will continue on. Let's see. We are at 6.01. Addendum to Agenda Item 10.05, Approval of Personnel Items. 7.0 Citizen Statements. We have none tonight. 8.0. May I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education as scheduled for January 16, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. The next regular board meeting will take place on Wednesday, February 20, 2018, beginning at 7:00 PM at Central Middle School. An anticipated closed session will be held at 6:00 PM. Board candidate filing. Board candidate filing concluded yesterday at 5:00 PM. The terms of Sudhir Rethad and Sam Sortino expire in April 2019. In order of filing, the candidates who have filed are Farida Hassan. Is she here tonight? No. Sam Sortino. Sudhir Rethad. Right there. And Pam Hill. There's Pam. Spring election will be held on Tuesday, April 2, 2019. Board liaison reports.
Well, actually, I just came back from a vacation, so I'm back on the track. This is my first day on the board. We had a great meeting with the nurses. In fact, I'm asking them to see on the Project Parkway. It's a really great stuff that people would like to see, so hopefully we'll see them. What a great work they are doing for the community, for the children. I was really amazed and impressed. So again, I really want to call out, you know, in public and thank you for such a great job our nurses are doing. So I look forward to seeing more and, you know, trying to help them the best they could to do the job. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So, last month, I was asked by Dr. Martin to speak at the Parkway Northeast Middle School Initial National Junior Honor Society Induction Ceremony, which was a great honor. The National Honor Society is a high school organization, but this is the first Parkway school to adopt the Junior Honor Society to honor middle school students who have excelled in the classroom, but also in other areas of leadership and citizenship and other areas. And I think we inducted 100 students. It was a really, really wonderful event, and I was asked to speak at it. And as a graduate of Parkway Northeast Middle School, it was nice to be honored there for once. Hey, I brought my mother, and it was nice that she could be proud of something that I accomplished at Northeast Middle School after 30 years. So that was a really great event, and I was delighted to sing part in it.
Could I just say that, and he's here tonight, so, and he's back there busy, but, Dr. Martin, Dr. Martin, we want to just, I just want to say, I don't know if you heard Kevin Saltzer say how much he enjoyed your Junior National Honor Society, but just to note, it was the fir-, it is the first junior middle school program, and I would just say, I just want to congratulate Dr. Martin. And I agree, you did a great job that night, Kevin. It was a wonderful address to the students.
Appreciate it.
All right. I will just preview. My big event next week is registering my daughter for kindergarten. This is my oldest child, so it'll be my first Parkway registration experience, so I am just going to go guns blazing right at 10, right at 8:00 AM on the 23rd. So, that's my preview of next week.
I guess my only report is the Special School District Board of Education. We have our, we did receive two applications for the positions that are open to run for the Special School District Board of Education. It's my role on the governing council, so just to report that out. So those elections will be taking place on March the 4th.
I have nothing to report. We have the TLA, I believe, in two weeks.
I want to echo about our school nurses. The presentation this evening was outstanding. It was outstanding because there's so much passion and care and love behind it all, and we know that happens in our schools every day with our nurses and all the people that they serve. So, on behalf of all of us, we want to thank you very, very, very much for taking care of all the needs of so many every single day. It's impressive. I also want to say that annually, there is a luncheon for the administrative staff, and it happens right before the holidays. And Jeff and I attended it, and it's always neat to go and enjoy that event. The lunch is not only great, but it's really nice to see everyone who works at the Administration Center all in one place. We see them coming and going. We don't really get to know them personally, but this gives us a chance as a board to thank them, number one. Secondly, just to get to know them and see them as a group and let them know that everything they do, whether they realize it or not, because they're not in the schools. If they were in the schools every day and just spent a day or two or three, they could recognize the impact that they have on what happens in the schools, the resources, just everything. And it makes a tremendous difference. It's kind of hard. I worked at the Administration Center for a while, too, and I was so removed from the schools, I didn't know what was going on. And it was really hard for me not to be aware of everything that happens in the schools, but they do their jobs every day, do it in a very excellent manner with enthusiasm. They work as a team, they're collegial, and every day, they make such an impact for our students and everything that happens in the school center, out of the district. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Sam. Since last month's board meeting, the only thing I have attended was the Central High Art Fair. The Central Region put together an art fair. West is coming up soon, but it was neat to get to see art from so many different, so many different kids, so many different grade levels, and just some amazing talent that we have in our district and the different mediums that kids are able to express themselves in art, and it was, it was a great event. I also spent the last, well, a few hours over the last few weeks, and I think Dr. Martin did as well, but as a result of some of the citizen statements that we had last month regarding dyslexia, we took it upon ourselves to go through the entire dyslexia training that our reading specialists and some of our other staff have gone through. And it was very educational to me that it provided me a great insight as to what we're asking our staff to do, what we're expecting them to identify and look out for. And I think we're on the right track. There were some questions raised last month, and I think that we've all kind of been looking at what we could be doing differently, what could we be doing better. But after going through the training, I think we're on the right track. And certainly, there are other things we could do, and we'll continue to develop this program that we've begun. But I think, like I said, I think we're on the right track, so I'm very happy to report that, so.
Well, thank you, board members, and just, it's such a busy time of the year, so thank you for your ongoing efforts. And I know we got a lot of things coming up, elementary, full elementary choir coming up, and a number of musicals and those things. So this is, I was telling our staff last week in a message that it's, this is a very busy time of the year, as we've got so much going now, but we're also starting to plan pretty aggressively for next year. Student registrations are underway, so this is, this January, February time of the year is a very, very busy time. But thanks for all your support, and we just hope that the weather holds. We don't have, we don't have a lot of disruption on the weather, but we'll do our best to watch that and be a conscientious of what we need to do to make sure our students and staff are safe.
Okay. We have no board subcommittee reports. Our next subcommittee meetings are Tuesday, January 22 at 4:30 PM, Student Services Subcommittee Meeting at ISC. Tuesday, January 29 at 4:30 PM, we have a TLA Subcommittee Meeting at ISC. Wednesday, February 6 at 8:30 AM, we have Project Parkway Steering Committee Meeting at ISC. And Monday, February 11 at 6:30 PM, we have the Project Parkway Quarterly Meeting at North High. Next, I have action items. 10.0. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in the January 16, 2019 Board Materials?
So moved.
Second.
Is there anything to be pulled to action or closed?
Yes, I would like to pull 10.05 to closed, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries 7.0. 7-0. There are no action items at this time. 12.0. We have policy review. 12.01. I don't need to read these, do I? There you go. So, policy review as published. If there are any questions, please contact Patty Bedborough. Anyone have any questions for Patty?
I'm sorry, on?
On the policy review items.
I do have a question for Patty on that.
Okay. Patty, would you join us, please?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My questions are in general for all three. Do you anticipate any major changes that the district is going to be having to go through in order to keep up with the policy and their procedures, so that we make sure that our procedures are following our policies?
So, these three policies in particular were in a notification from MSBA that we received in the month of December. We went through and we adjusted our existing, or went from our existing policies and adjusted these in order to meet the criteria that we currently work through, and then also adjust our current practices based on the change in state statute. But at this time, we do not believe that there'll be major shift in what we do. The one in particular is the federal programs and policies or projects, DJFA. That policy was rather new that we put in place because it was put in place as a federal requirement. The portions that are changed in there were that overall federal law always trumps state law, where our state law says that we should give local businesses and state organizations extra consideration when we're looking at our purchases. Federal law states that you need to take the best overall, so we're changing that back to reflect the actual federal law on that. We have very few goods and services that are actually purchased with federal program funds. Most of our federal funds are actually utilized to purchase salaries and benefits for our title funds. We do receive the federal funds for our free and reduced program, for our food service program. That also could be construed that that's mostly for salaries and benefits as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Patty. These policies will be up for approval at the next regular board meeting. Reports. May I have Kevin Beckner, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching, Learning, and Accountability, join us?
Well, thank you very much, President Todd, Vice President Sortino, Dr. Martin, Mr. Stover, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here. I do apologize that I cannot share any state championships, any certifications of high national standards, or any current National Honor Societies. So it is a downgrade from all of our students and teachers, but we'll do our best to try to talk through Goal One student interviews. And thank you for the opportunity to share this exciting data collection process that we're engaging in to really try to assess our measurable objectives related to our Parkway mission and vision. We know that our mission and vision calls for students to be capable, curious, caring, competent learners, but it also calls them to be able to respond to the challenges of an ever-changing world. That's the last clause of our mission statement. And when we went out prior to Project Parkway 2.0, we asked our community through our listening tours that reached 1,100 parents, students, and staff members. We asked them multiple questions, one of which was the question, what do students need to navigate an ever-changing world? And when we asked that question, we heard lots of things, and here's just a sample of some of the themes we heard from our community around ever-changing world. So we noticed some things on here that certainly are easy to measure, and we see some things that are very difficult to measure. So, things like character development and understanding diversity, engaging global issues and awareness. This is a good reminder from our community that we value many things that go beyond test scores, attendance, graduation rate, though those are all certainly important. So where this process fits into our overall plan, we know that we have mission, vision, learning principles, which is our ultimate aim for all of our graduates. We then develop goals through Project Parkway 2.0, of which we currently have three. Goal One is related to students and students being able to engage positively in the ever-changing world. Then, under goals, we have measurable objectives, and that's really where we want to focus tonight. Once we develop those, we then develop strategies and action steps to carry out that plan and ensure that we really are achieving our mission for all students. But when we talk about measurable objectives, we really want to make sure that we can measure those things. So here are the six measurable objectives that were developed under Goal One. We want students to ask and pursue meaningful questions, transfer their learning to new situations in and outside of school, understand the views, values, cultures of others, set, adjust, and achieve goals, be kind, display concern for the well-being of self and others, and then meet or demonstrate growth toward all of our expectations for academic learning. And the challenge that we really had when we considered our measurable objectives is that when we look at these things, some of them are really related not to test scores but to our mission. How do we make sure that we're really achieving that for all of our students? So we have lots of available data, such as test scores, we have attendance, graduation rate, our annual achievement report from DESI. We do lots of surveys, including our climate survey, our culture survey. We do targeted surveys of our students and staff. We do all of this data collection, but still, none of that really got us to, are we achieving these measurable objectives that we've identified under Goal One? So in order to start exploring that, we reached out to an educational research firm that's nationally recognized, Hannover Research, and we shared with them our measurable objectives and said, okay, please help us understand how to, how to measure what we're trying to really assess. How do we know that students are kind and displaying concern, or that they're setting, adjusting, and achieving goals? And they took the time to sit with us and really look at our measurable objectives and help understand our priorities. They understood also that we didn't want to just use available data and we didn't want to just survey students, because we know that there are some challenges with that, like response bias. Not all students respond, or the students who do respond might have a particular point of view or maybe not be representative of the whole population, different challenges. And after working with Hannover Research, they suggested that we use a semi-structured interview process. And in a semi-structured interview process, it's a little bit different from just interviewing people. We do have some standard questions, questions that every student gets asked, but it allows us to explore a little bit, because the focus really of a semi-structured interview is on the interviewer really understanding what the student is saying. So you can ask a question, the student might give a response, and if it's not really clear whether the student understood the question, or we really didn't understand where they were coming from, we can probe and explore and ask follow-up questions, tell me more about that, so that we can really get a sense of student understanding. So it gives us flexibility within an existing structure so that we can really help make sure that we're understanding where our students are coming from. We also, just so you know a little bit about the selection process for how do we choose the students we interview? We randomly select our students. We randomly go through and draw a representative sample of our district, and that's important because we want to make sure that we're not getting all students of any particular group. We want to make sure it really is reflecting Parkway's diversity and Parkway's enrollment. We do give parents and students the option to decline being interviewed. It's not forced, and so we do contact all parents and make sure that they have that opportunity. And we are attempting, through Dr. Tyson, he's identified that 400 students is the number we really need to get a really solid representative sample from our community. So that's our target, is to reach 400 students. So as we began that process, we had to make a first attempt, and say, okay, so how are we going to do this, and how's it going to work? So we identified 15 staff, 15 students of Parkway staff members, one of whom is this, this lovely young lady right there. That's my daughter McKinley. She was at the end of her second grade year. We went and interviewed McKinley. Susan Erby-Hawkinson actually conducted the interview and probed with McKinley some things like, so McKinley, do you set goals? And McKinley's like, yeah, I set some goals. Susan asked her, so what goals you set? She's like, roller skating. I am super into roller skating, and I stuck with that goal, and I really worked at it, and I am way faster than my dad, which is definitely true. So we learned some things through that first attempt, and here are just a few of those things that we learned. We learned that we need different versions of our interview questions by level. We need to make sure that elementary students can understand the questions, as well as high school students can understand those questions. We understood that we needed a clear rubric. If we're going to really collect data and we're really going to use it to see how well are we doing at achieving our measurable objectives, we have to have a rubric that really identifies how well we're doing at that. We learned that we have to train everybody who's doing the interviews. We can't just send people out and say, here's a script, go interview some people. No, we have to go through training to make sure that they're conducted well and that this is a good process, it's really thorough, and we can trust the results. And then we really learned that we need to carry out these interviews in pairs, and we learned that for a couple reasons. One, we want to make sure the data we get back is good, so actually both, both people conducting the interview score the student responses and then talk about the responses before they enter those scores, so that we can ensure that we're getting really good results, but also so that one of the interviewers can engage with the student, making eye contact, talking to them, really probing, while the other can take notes about their responses to make sure, again, we've got good information and can really understand how we're doing. It's also important to note here, we're not actually evaluating the students, we're evaluating Parkway. We're evaluating how are we doing? How are we affecting students? And that's important because our questions really focus on what is Parkway's value-added for this student? So for example, if McKinley is a very kind young lady who shows concern for the well-being of self and others, but she has that because that's a value we really talk about at home and try to instill in her, and then we ask her, so what's Parkway done about that? She's like, nah, nothing. Okay, well, that's a problem. Like, we want Parkway to be adding value around that objective, not just, we're not evaluating our parents, we're not evaluating our students, we're really trying to say, how is Parkway doing in this, in this area? So here's an example of one of our rubrics. And really, the goal, just so we all know, is really to be at that Level Three, where a student can provide clear evidence that we have, in fact, done something to help them achieve that measurable objective. The other categories are to help us kind of figure out how close are we to that, but really, a three is our, is our goal. So when we look at our first round of data collection, which last year, we interviewed about 170 students, collecting data from about 170, or 145 of those student interviews, the rest were for training purposes, we saw some patterns that are helpful. Now, just note before I put it up there that these do not actually reflect a full sample that we can really draw meaningful conclusions from, because we didn't reach that 400 number. But when we put the data up there and see how many students ended up with a three, we see that our strongest area indicates that it might be helping students display kindness and concern for the well-being of self and others, that our schools are doing, doing an excellent job of talking about character, of building their character education programs, of helping people develop empathy, of doing all the things that we know it takes to be full people. And then some others we might need to do some work on, like how do we help students take what they've learned in our schools and use them outside of school, or how do we help them ask and pursue meaningful questions that add value and have meaning for them in their lives? Then our plan for this year, for this semester, is interviews do begin on January 31, and we've begun scheduling all those out. They will conclude in early April, with our goal, again, to reach about 400 students during this semester. We'll have teachers, administrators, and steering committee members invited to participate in these interviews. Last year, we used several already existing teacher groups and other structures, for example, our future leaders in Parkway. We had, that's our teacher group, who is our aspiring administrators. We had many of them participate, and we hope to do that again, to have other teacher groups participate in these interviews. We certainly also would be open to board members participating, so if any of you are interested, feel free to let me know. We'd be happy to have you come talk to some students and learn about how Parkway is doing.
They have to go through training, no?
They have to go through training. You can't just walk in. You got to get trained, yeah. The big benefit of having now done this with the group, though, is we can actually do on-interview training. If you go with somebody who has been through the process before, they can train you as we go. So it's a little, the barrier's lower now that we have people who've done them before. So that is our plan for this semester. We're very excited to continue this process so that we can evaluate Project Parkway, our measurable objectives around Goal One, and this time, I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
So, looking at the results and understanding that this is not enough interviews to have a meaningful sample, but the purpose of this is to, I guess, quantify objectively whether or not we're meeting those goals. What, at what percentage point would you say we are meeting these goals? Is it having 50% in that third column? Is it something less than that, something more than that? What's success look like to you?
Yeah, certainly, our end, our long-term goal, we know that our mission includes the word "all," and so that really would be, we want 100% threes in all content areas. We know getting there is very difficult, so once we have a good dataset, what we'll need to do is work with our principals, identify, so how can we increase these numbers and set targets so we get to 100%? And we do that by setting, so let's say, let's pretend for a second these numbers are accurate, and we know that transferring learning to new and unique situations is a low, like, that's 33% of students scored a three there. We know we're not going to get to 100% immediately, so we would identify strategies that would help us increase that number, and then set targets and say, two years out, we want that to be at 50%, and then we want it to be at 60, and we would identify those as we get the data. So we need to wait a little bit to identify those targets. We're going to not stop until we're at 100, but we do want to identify what are reasonable, achievable, but stretching targets, so that we can really push ourselves to make sure that we're meeting these.
Do you have any backup plans? So, when I say backup plan, it's basically, you know, trial and error kind of a thing. So as you move forward, you see something which is working, which is not working. Do you have sort of that plan and how you want to, you know, measure so that you know whether you are succeeding, it's working? How can we take it to the next?
Yeah, and that's a great question. We have to continually evaluate this process and make sure it's working. I think that's really your question, is we have to make sure that we have a process by which we look at the results, that we look at the questions. I can tell you, last year, we did a ton of that. We got started very late. Dr. Martin was very kind, and he did probably 30 interviews with a lot of students, but because we kept iterating the questions and changing the rubric based on the fact that we would go out and do interviews and say, kids still didn't get this question. They didn't understand it. They didn't understand it." Or kids really, it seems like elementary students maybe didn't understand this question, or it seems like they're answering a different question than what we're asking, so maybe our wording is wrong. So, we've already actually made a lot of those adjustments. It doesn't mean we're at 100%. It doesn't mean we're there, but we do need to keep evaluating the data and talking to the people doing the interviews and saying, "What's working, what's not?" And we would use most likely a Project Parkway structure to help us just modify that as we go along.
Thank you, Kevin.
So, in a conversation I was having with someone recently, kind of a light bulb went on, and I'm wondering if something like that could be incorporated here, but the issue was around school with children and our end students. And the question was, "Are you working for school or is school working for you?" And I think that would be a phenomenal question to ask our students because it feels sometimes like kids are working for the school to get through the requirements, to get what you have to to graduate, to get through this, to get through that. What choices, then, do the students have to pursue school working for them? And that's where I know we're working on personalized learning.
It's like you teed it up.
It's like, I just can't wait to get this. So, you know, I think, and I think the questions are great, but I think that's another question. It just was like a light bulb that hit some people was like, "Oh, my gosh." You know, kids are working for the school. Is the school really working for them? And then, I think in some ways, the schools are working for students very well, but can we do, can we do that better?
No, that's, thank you very much for that comment. We know that if we go all the way back to the beginning of Project Parkway, one of the most controversial words in our mission was "all" because we said, "Are we really committed to all kids?" And I think you're right. School works for many students, but we know that we're not at all, and we know that there are students for whom school doesn't work for various reasons, whether those be personal, academic, social, emotional, structure, who knows what the reason is. We have to really work on that with each student. But you're right that we want to make sure, we want to make school awesome. And that's a hard thing to say because people think, "School's great already." Parkway is a great district. We have so many celebration, I mean, like, we saw our teachers and our students getting awarded all kinds of recognitions tonight. We have so many things to be proud of. We certainly could rest on those laurels and say, "We're good enough." And we're not satisfied with that because school, as we know it, doesn't meet the needs of all students. And even for students for whom it does, quote-unquote, "work," is it working to the best way it possibly can? Are we doing everything we can to really make sure that we're doing right by every student? And I joke that you teed up personalized, but that really is a lot of the impetus for why we're moving towards personalized learning. And I want to go back to just that, one of those early slides. When we think about how everything flows together, we have to identify strategies, and we know that we've identified in Goal One, character education, and personalized learning as our two key strategies to achieving our mission, our vision, our measurable objectives. Just this morning, we had a principals' meeting, and we started, every month this year, we are, we're really growing our leaders, whether that's our coordinators, our principals, our directors, everybody who is in the district. We're focused this year on helping our leaders understand personalized learning and what it means and what it could be because it's not something that we, we didn't go to school in personalized settings. We went to school in standardized. We worked for school, right? You have 178 days to learn what you need to learn. We group that into semesters. We group those into units. You have a fixed amount of time to learn what you need to learn, and then you have to fit in that. And learning becomes variable, meaning like, we have to grade students and give them different letters to show that in this fixed amount of time, you learned it to this degree. How can we make sure that we are working for students, not students working for us? How can we, and our teachers are doing amazing things within the structure that we built. But the structure we built isn't really designed to achieve our mission, vision, and learning principles. When I say "we," I mean American education because that's how it's structured everywhere in our country. So, how do we make sure that we really flow from our mission, that we're a mission-driven organization, that we're going to do these things? So, when I said, I started with, we were working with our leaders this morning, the first thing we started with was actually our vision statements. If this is what we believe is our vision for Parkway learners, how is this connected to the work of personalized learning? And largely, the answer was, "Oh, my gosh, almost everything in this vision is about, we need to personalize learning for our kids. We need to help our, change our system." I appreciate you indulging my five-minute rant about this, but as you can tell, we're really passionate at Parkway about making sure that we're doing everything we can to meet our students' needs, and that might mean doing some things pretty differently. And our students can tell us that. We can learn that through this interview process, and we can also learn it from the experience of our students.
And just one question to follow up on that. A number of years ago, another board member brought up the idea of interviewing recently graduated students. And do you have thoughts on pursuing that at all?
Yeah, I think it's a great strategy, and we haven't pursued it just because we know that we have challenges reaching our recent graduates, and we know that, I know Dr. Tyson's not here, but if I can speak a little bit. We do a graduate survey. We have to do a follow-up survey 180 days after students leave us. And even with just trying to get them to respond to a survey is very difficult. Our response rate is really very low in all districts. We've worked with other districts in the state, and it's just really challenging to get them. It's a really great idea. It's logistically very, very difficult. We know it's valuable information, so one of the things we do in that process is we actually do an exit interview with all students, or an exit survey, I should say, with all students, where we ask them, you know, "What are your plans? What are you intending to do? Are you going to two-year? Are you going to a four-year? Are you going straight to a job? Are you going to training? What are you, what are you doing?" And we take all that information, and then in that survey, we really ask, "Here's what you told us. Is that all still right?" And even there, we're really just asking, "Is it right or is it not?" We see a very low response rate, so it's not that that's not a really valuable potential piece of information that we could get. The logistics of it just become very challenging. It's something that I think we should continue to keep in the conversation and potentially explore. Just so you know, that's why we really haven't, is it's hard to get them to respond to a survey. It's even harder to then say, "And we want to come and sit and talk with you. Could you please go with us?" That's a bigger ask, too, and so that's why we haven't really gone after that.
Well, thank you for doing this. I think this can, I think it's of value, so, thank you.
I just had to share. Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, just one last follow-up. The interview itself, and I guess, my question, did your daughter enjoy the interview? What were her thoughts of the process?
She did, we talked about it afterwards. Of course, I knew that she was doing it. Enjoy might be too strong just because it's uncomfortable to be with adults, so we do what we can to like, make them comfortable. Part of what we do, just so you know, is we actually, so we have five measurable objectives that we're asking about, but we ask 10 questions. In each set, we actually ask them a question that's about them first, like to help them feel more comfortable and get a sense of like, what the question's about. So, for example, when we ask about asking and pursuing meaningful questions, we might first ask them like, "Hey, is there something that you've been like, really curious about that you could tell us about?" And then, we ask, "Oh, so how has school helped you? Does school give you a chance to explore those things?" So, we try to really engage them first. We're not actually scoring that first question. We're scoring the second one, but for that reason, because it could be intimidating for students, even high school students, to have a couple of strangers. We really try to make it a comfortable experience for them and a low-stress, and so that's actually part of our training process, is how do you make students feel comfortable? And how do you warm them up and that sort of thing? I'll tell you, with my daughter being in second grade, my wife was actually there with her at that time, so she was like, really willing to share a lot of stuff. We wouldn't do that with most students. But she, I wouldn't say she came home and said, "That was terrible." It was just another part of her, part of her day.
But as her father, do you think, you think you got effective results out of her? Is that sort of representative of the process with other students?
Well, I, you know, every student's different, and Kevin's right. I probably talked to 25, 30 students, and I can tell you, some students would have talked for an hour. They were just so comfortable. There were some students couldn't wait to get out of there. So, it really depends. You know, I, you just have to appreciate the students. And there were some, actually, some interviews where the student left, and the first time I was working with, they look at and says, "I don't think we can use this data because we just didn't get anything. They weren't comfortable," and so, it's just every student's different. And, you know, it's random, so, you know. And to that, and I'd just like to comment, I was at a suburban superintendent group this last fall, and one of the topics we were, we get in groups and we delved into was, "Well, how do we get student feedback?" And I don't think I even told Kevin and some of the people this story. So, we're talking, and some of the bold superintendents, "Oh, yeah, I go to my, I go to the high schools and I sit down and I, you know, sit with kids and eat lunch with them, and I go to calculus and, oh, I get a lot of information from kids." And we were going around, and I'm thinking, "Yeah, okay, how scientific is that?" So, I got, I got, so I'm really teeing up. I'm really excited. So, he said, "Okay, well, Keith, what are you doing?" And I says, "Well, we have this process." And I said, "We actually have this random process, and it's about all students." And I was done, one of the superintendents says, "Wow, your information's going to be a lot more accurate than mine because I just, I'm only talking to, you know, probably the top students in the senior class, and I'm using that data." So, I guess I'm saying that because I think in this process, because we talked to students who had trouble speaking English. I talked to students who had, students with special needs. I mean, I didn't know who was coming in. I didn't know. I mean, I didn't, I saw a name student come in. It was a random, random group of students at all levels. And I think that will play out well in terms of how accurate the information is because it's about all. It isn't just about the kids that are in the Spark program or the kids that are, you know, doing well or, you know, that have great career goals. It's about, it's about all students at every level.
I actually was talking to Jamie DeBosch, the principal of Belle Reve Elementary this morning. She said, "Um, yeah, so I got a call. One of the students you selected is deaf." "Oh, cool, let's figure out how to do this, then." Like, she's one of our students. We want to know how we're doing, so we've got to, now, the parent might say, "I don't think so." Okay, that's fine, but, you know, we're going to try to figure it out because it really